Praise the Lord, everybody. Amen. I want to welcome you, amen, to Praise by Nature Ministries, amen. If you're listening, amen, on our podcast channel, I want to welcome you to our podcast channel, amen, where you'll be getting, amen, our Bible studies, you'll be getting our sermons, amen, from the upcoming weeks and also from previous Sundays, amen. So again, I want to say praise the Lord to everybody, amen. Hallelujah. God is just so good to us. Hallelujah. I don't know about you, but aren't you excited, amen, to fellowship with the Lord one more time? Hallelujah. Amen. We have a jam-packed Bible study session this evening, amen. We're going to be dealing, amen, in the book of Philippians, chapter three, and we're going to try to get through verses 12 through 19, amen. That's where we're going to start our basis tonight, hallelujah, in Philippians, chapter 12, verses 3, amen. I hope you're having a blessed day because I'm having a blessed day. "I woke up this morning with my mind still stayed on Jesus." Hallelujah. Amen. I'm just so excited, amen, for what God is doing and for what God is doing in your life, amen. So you be so kind, amen. Turn with me to the book of Philippians, chapter 3, amen, and we're going to go ahead and get started with the word of the Lord, amen. But first and foremost, the very, the very, very, very first thing that we must do before we do anything is we must pray. Hallelujah. How many know that prayer is the thing that changes things? Prayer changes things. Hallelujah. Amen. So let's go ahead and go before the Lord in a word of prayer, amen. Father, in the precious name of Jesus, we come to you humble as we know how. We thank you for tonight, for your word, for your glory, your grace, and your power, God, and we just lift your name up on high tonight, God, because we know that there is no other name that we shall be saved by but by your name. Hallelujah. And Lord Jesus, we give you glory, honor, and praise. God, we ask God that as we go through this Bible study tonight, God, that souls will be saved, minds will be refreshed, and hearts will be purified, God, that there will be a cleansing and an awakening, Father, in your word tonight, Father. Oh, God, we give you the glory, we give you the honor and the praise. God bless me as I present your word this evening, Father, and allow me, God, to be a vessel, hallelujah, for you and speak your word, Father. Oh, we give you the glory, honor, and praise, Father, in Jesus' name, amen. Amen, brothers and sisters, hallelujah. Again, I want to welcome you, amen, to Praise by Nature Ministries, amen, and tonight we're going to be featuring Philippians, chapter 3, amen. We're in part 3, part 3 of Philippians, chapter 3, amen. If you've been with us, amen. I do like to take my time in certain sections of this passage and of this book because I believe that God has a word for us, amen, and I don't want to, you know, take it lightly, the sections that God has given us, hallelujah. And so, amen, we're going to go ahead and we'll recap a couple of verses that stood out to me, amen, and then we'll go forth in the things of the Lord, amen. Hallelujah. And so, there are a couple of verses that stood out to me from the previous text, and those verses are simply verses 10 through 11. And the Philippians writer, who is Paul, he says some things that are very vital. He says, and he's kind of closing this section, but he identifies by saying that in verse 10, he says, and I'm reading from the New American Standard Translation, he says, "That I may know him," this is Jesus, "and the power of his resurrection, and the fellowship of his suffering, being conformed to his death, in order," verse 11, "in order that I may obtain to the resurrection from the dead, in order that I may obtain to the resurrection from the dead." If you remember in previous times and previous conversation we had, you would realize that Paul starts off in this chapter by stating something to the church that he is, he's, it's not a, it's not a bad thing for him or it's not a chore, per se, for him to write this letter to them. And, and he also indicates that by writing this letter, it really actually insinuates a safeguard or a safe haven for those that are reading this word. It's, it can be considered as a reminder of what is to come. And so, Paul is not tripping off the fact that he must write this letter. And as we went through the previous weeks, we went through the fact that Paul says something very peculiar. The first thing he comes out the gate is saying that folk, you guys need to be aware of people with evil motives, who have evil restrictions, you need to be aware of them. You need to watch out, watch out for them. And he's going to pick that back up later on in the text, but he says right out the gate, you need to watch out for these people with evil motives and evil things. And I just want to pause there because it is imperative that you and I continue to watch out. It's imperative that you and I continue to watch out for people that have evil motives, people that have evil things that they want to do. It's imperative that you and I continue to watch out. The reason why it's imperative is because, amen, we're, we're in that time and in that season, just like in the days of old, where, amen, people are doing whatever they want to do under the sun and not do what Christ would have them to do. And so, if we are not careful, we can get sucked in to that movement and that environment that is not conducive to the things of God. And let's be clear, every last one of us at one particular time or point in our life has been sucked into a narrative or an agenda that we won't really clear upon. But thanks be to God that he has given us grace and he has allowed us to really ask him for forgiveness for the sins that we have done, that we've sinned and wronged him, so that you and I can continue, amen, to God, to walk in his ways and in the newness of his light. So he tells them, you know, watch out. He goes on to tell them, if anybody wants to operate in the flesh, that he has a better reason that he could really pick up those rights of operating in the flesh. And he goes through his street cred, is what I like to call, of where he was from, what he was raised upon, you know, what set of the religion he was a part of, all of these things. He goes, he goes through all of these things. And the one thing that he mentions is that even though he has all of this street cred and all of that street cred, including him persecuting the church, and in the eyes of the world, the world said that he was not guilty. But in the eyes of God, he was guilty because he was persecuting the fellow brethren and sisters that he had declared that, you know, you know, that they were really their brothers, sisters in Christ, and he was declaring war on them. And so, Paul says, don't, 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 don't get caught up in all of that because what can be pleasing in the world can be blasphemous in the sight of God. What the world deems right and okay in the eyes of God, God can say that this is wrong. And so, Paul says, you know, "I had all of this street cred, but really look where it got me. I persecuted the church and the world and the religious leaders who, who I sat under were okay with that." They, they weren't tripping, they weren't tripping about that. Praise the Lord, a brother said to them, "They weren't, they weren't tripping about that. They, 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 they didn't care." Because the reality was, is that Paul was doing their agenda. And so, the reality is, is that this is a lesson that as long as, if you're in the world and you're doing the world's agenda, the world is going to continue to love you and support you as long as you stay in the parameters of their agenda. But Paul says, look, man, he traded all that in, he says, "I count all of that as rubbish, rubbish." Why? Because it doesn't, praise the Lord, sisters and men, it doesn't gain him anything. He didn't gain anything from it. Matter of fact, he says, really, to gain Christ, I, I'm counting all of that, I'm throwing all of my accolades away, I'm throwing all of that away because the most important thing is, is that I value Christ and I want to learn Christ and I want to be like him. I don't want to be like myself. I want to be like him. I value Christ. I hold Christ to a standard, a high standard. And I realized that when the Lord laid a hold upon me, I realized something in my life, hallelujah, that what I was doing was really wrong. And he says, "It doesn't matter, the accolades, the street cred, all of that, it doesn't matter. I'm willing to put that away. I already counted that as garbage because it didn't have any value, it didn't fulfill anything. But one thing that I know is true, Jesus is real, he is true, and if I stay connected to him, as he said in 11, that he wants to obtain the resurrection from death. He wants to live with him for eternity." So, he poses some, he poses some things here. He poses some things on how you and I, as believers, should want to live, that we want to lay down everything for Christ, that all of these accolades, you can't take them with you. They don't do nothing for you in the sight of God. Hallelujah to your name, Jesus. They don't do anything for you. They may put you in a bigger predicament of drawing you away from God instead of drawing you near and closer to God. Paul's point now is here, I want to be closer to him. And I'm letting go of all of those things. And then he gets to that point where he's like, "I want to experience what he experienced. I want to suffer what he suffered. I want to go through what he went through, right? I want to be conformed to his death. I want to know him in his resurrection. I want a fellowship in his suffering, all so that when it's all said and done and when the rapture takes place, I will be caught up with him in glory and that I won't experience the second death." I don't know about you, but how many are still, hallelujah, oh, my God, how many are still waiting for the return of Christ? I don't know about you, but how many still are looking to be caught up with him? How many are still in that mindset and that mentality that come hell or high water, I'm going to be with Christ and I'm going to stay with him until the end? Hallelujah. Because I want heaven to be my home. I want to be caught up with him in glory. I don't want these people to, I don't want man's glory. I don't want to be caught up in the world. I want to be caught up with him in the sky, hallelujah, so that I experience everlasting life when it's all said and done. Paul says, "I got my eyes and my heart fixed on Jesus." Hallelujah. "I got my heart, my, my mind, my soul, my everything fixed on Jesus. I hear the song, 'I got my mind made up and I won't turn back because I gotta see my Jesus someday.'" He's telling us here, "My heart and my mind is fixed," hallelujah, "on the things of Christ." Let's go ahead and read 12 through 19, if you please. Starting at verse 12, he says, now watch what he says, "Not that I have already obtained it or have already become perfect, but I press on so that I may lay hold of that for which I have also laid hold of by Christ. Brother, and I do not regard myself as having laid hold of it yet, but one thing I do, forgetting what lies behind and reaching forward to what lies ahead. I press on towards the goal for the prize of the upward calling, upward call of God in Christ Jesus." He says, "Let us therefore, as many are perfect, have this attitude. And if in anything you have a different attitude, God will reveal that also to you." However, he says, "Let us keep living by that same standard to which we have obtained, attained, excuse me. Brother, and join and follow in my example and observe those who walk according to these patterns you have in us." 18, he says, "For many walk, of whom I often told you and now tell you even weeping, that they are enemies of the cross of Christ, whose end is destruction, whose God is their appetites, and whose glory is in their shame, who set their mind on earthly things." All right, y'all, we got some work to do here. We got some work to do here. Let's, let's look at verse 12. Verse 12, again, it tells us, right? Paul says that he has not obtained it yet. He has not obtained the resurrection of the, the second, you know, he hasn't attained, he hasn't attained the resurrection yet. He hasn't obtained the goal that is at hand here. He hasn't. And so, he says that he is, he, 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 he also says that he has not become perfect or the Bible will tell us in the Greek word, mature. But he says something here that he is pressing on so that he can lay hold of what Christ has laid a hold upon him. And the, the title that came to me was this, "Christ has overtaken my heart, my mind, and my soul." I want you to keep that in the back of your mind as we move forward tonight because Paul is saying that I want to lay hold of what was laid hold on me, meaning I want to, I want to, I'm trying to lay hold, I'm trying to obtain what was laid hold of me, meaning that Christ has had overtaken him when he met him on the road of Damascus, Christ overpowered, overpowering and overtaking him and, and put a hold on his heart and his mind and soul. Brothers and sisters, when the Lord puts a hold on your heart and your mind and soul, something in you has to change. Listen, he had all the accolades in the world. He had status, he had power, he had property, he couldn't, he probably may have property, but he had the best of what the world had to offer at that particular time. But yet and still, when Christ came into his life, he realized, because now he could really see that all of those things that he had, that he thought was okay, was nothing and meaningless, meaning that Christ had taken a hold upon his heart, his mind and soul, and had changed the way he looked, changed the way he talked, changed the way he think, changed the way he saw things because no longer is he seeing it from his, his upbringing, but he is seeing it now from the perspective, hallelujah, and the eyes of Christ. So Christ has taken a hold of him. I wonder, I wonder, has Christ taken a hold of you? Has Christ taken a hold of your heart, your mind, and your soul? Has Christ taken a hold of you to the point that what you used to see and what you used to hold in high esteem means nothing but rubbish to you now? Because you see that there is a better goal, there's a better prize, there's a better way, hallelujah, and that way is through Christ Jesus. Has the Lord taken a hold of your heart and your mind and your soul? I just, I just want to know. Hallelujah. I want to know. And I want you to listen to the humility that Paul says. He says, "After, listen, after all that I have done, all of the things that I have done while in Christ, I'm still not where I need to be at. I still have not arrived." Yeah. All the things I've done, all the, all the street cred I have as being a soldier, all the, all the imprisonment, all the, the, the consecutive sentences I've served, all of the ship, the shipwrecks I went through, all of these things, people stoning me, all of these rioting, all these people cussing me out, looking at me funny, telling me, running me out of cities, all of these things that I did in the name of Jesus, I still have not arrived yet. I'm still working on me. I'm, God is still working on me. I'm still trying to obtain perfection. So Paul is saying, it, it don't even matter what I've already done. I, 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 I'm still working on me. God is still working on me. I'm still trying to become mature and perfect in him. Hallelujah. Hallelujah. He's trying to tell them, "Listen, I know how you view me, but even though you view me how you view me, I'm still going through like you going through. I'm still persevering like you're persevering. I'm still trying to strive to be right. I'm still fighting wars within my mind like you are. I'm still fighting my flesh like you are. I'm still fighting demonic systems left and right like you are. I'm still fighting in my mind doubt in my mind. I'm still struggling with certain things because the Bible said that there was a thorn in his flesh and God wouldn't remove it. So it indicates that he has some things, some internal things that he's still struggling with. And he says, "I haven't arrived yet, but I'm still working towards that." Or his famous word would be, "I'm still pressing on. I'm still keeping on. I'm still persevering. I'm still fighting. I still," hallelujah, "want to be with Christ." Can I pause here? This, this, this passage really speaks volumes of a person who has their mind made up, that it doesn't matter what balls, curveballs are thrown in their life. I'm going to persevere. This is why you can't give God lip service. You have to be all in. Paul is all in. Many times, we live in this, many times, we're in a society where people are giving him lip service. So then when the going gets tough, they bow out gracefully because they're not committed and willing to persevere what they're going through to be with Christ. Oh, no. You got to have this work life. You got to have a work ethic. You got to be willing to be all in. You got to be willing to have some good days and some bad days. You got to be willing to cry sometimes and ask God why. You got to be willing to pray against things and got to pray for yourself. You got to be willing to hold on to a word when nothing else seems to be mattering, when you don't feel that God is there. You got to still learn how to hold on to a word that God has spoken into your life. Hallelujah. I wonder if I have some witnesses out there, hallelujah, that will declare with me, hallelujah, that I, there've been some times in my life that I may have not felt God's word or may not have heard him like I wanted to hear him, but I thank God that I continued to hold on to the word that was embedded in my heart. Hallelujah to your name, Jesus. You got to learn how to hold on to a word and persevere. It don't matter where you live at and don't matter how you, where you came from, when it's all said and done, when you put on the name of Jesus, Jesus is requiring you to hang on in there and persevere. Because at the end of the day, there's going to be an outcome, hallelujah. There's going to be a goal. There's going to be a finished line, and that is eternal salvation with him. That is living with him for all eternity. God has a reward for you on the other side. You just got to learn how to persevere, learn how to endure, and don't give up on God. Paul says, he says, "I'm trying to press on." You know what press on means? Hallelujah. Press on has the meaning to pursue, to carry out or participate in the activity. Paul is saying that I'm in pursuit of that goal. I'm in pursuit of that prize. I am carrying out my orders and I'm in pursuit, hallelujah, of the glory that shall be revealed. I'm in pursuit, hallelujah, of the glory, hallelujah, that I, I want to feel on the inside. I'm in pursuit that, that when it's all said and done, I'm going to live with him for all eternity. I'm in pursuit. You got to ask yourself, are you in pursuit? Are you willing to hang on in there? Does Christ have a hold on you? Hallelujah. Hallelujah. He says, he, he tells us in the latter part of 12, he says, "I want to take, I want to take hold of that." He said, "I want, I want, I want, I want God to take hold of me." Look what he says in Timothy. He told Timothy that he had fought, this is 1 Timothy 6 and 12. He says, "Fight the good fight of faith. Take hold of the eternal life to which you were called and you made the good confessions in the presence of many witness." He says, "Fight the good fight of faith. Take hold of eternal life." Paul says, "I want to take hold of what was laid hold of me." He says, "I'm holding on to this goal of eternal life." He tells Timothy, "Take hold of eternal life to which you were called." When God takes a hold of you, he's saying, "I'm putting you in a position so that you can obtain eternal life, but you got to persevere down here on this earth." Hallelujah, to obtain eternal life. Yeah. 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 Yeah, 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 yeah. He's trying to put you in the mindset to obtain eternal life. He don't want you out here just doing willy nilly. Hallelujah. Y'all ain't hearing me here, hallelujah. Listen what he says in 6:19. In 1 Timothy 6:19, he says, stirring up for themselves the treasure of a good foundation for the future so that they may take hold of that which is life indeed. You see what he's saying here? He says, I'm pressing on so that I can lay hold, I can take hold of this. The taking hold is eternal life. Paul is saying, I'm gonna see this through. I wanna see eternal life. I wanna see eternal life. Praise the Lord Pastor Deary, amen. I wanna see eternal life. I wanna, I wanna see that. See, see, y'all gotta understand something. This is not popular because the society doesn't want you to take hold of eternal life. They want you to twist the word of God up. They want you to be detained by demonic stuff so that you don't really get in tune with God. Because they don't want you to have your eyes taking hold of eternal life. They don't want you storing up good treasures in glory. They don't want that. The world doesn't want that. That's why they try to mix the profane with the unprofane. That's why they try to mix the holy with the unholy. They don't want you, they, 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 they don't want you to do this. I am convinced, I am convinced, the more I read, the more I spend time with God, your perseverance is real and it's a real thing and you have to make a decision that I'm going to stick it through no matter what. A lot of times, we use those words perseverance to get people to run and shout and slap their neighbor. Yeah, that's fine sometimes. But at the end of the day, what are you gonna do when the rubber meets the road? You've gotta learn how to persevere. You gotta learn how to endure. Paul is teaching the church that I'm trying to lay hold, I'm not there yet. I'm still enduring like you enduring. Matter of fact, he's, I'm in jail, he says, I'm in jail. I, I'm, man, man, I'm, I'm on house arrest with Caesar. I'm still trying to see what my outcome gonna be. Goodness. Listen, listen what he says with that, with that ending part, right? That he know, that with him ending this verse, he says, by stating that Christ has a hold on him. We look at his conversion in Acts 9:5 through 6 and it said, and he said, Jesus, and Paul said, who are you Lord? And he said, I am Jesus whom you are what persecuting. Verse 6 says, he says, but get up and enter the city and it will be told to you what you must do. Right? This is, this is his conversion point. At your conversion point, man, that's when you gotta be for real. I'm, I'm, I'm trying to tell you. Listen to his attitude in Romans 8:39. He says, nor height nor death nor any created thing will be able to separate us from the love of God, which is in Christ Jesus our Lord. You gotta get to this mind, this mentality state, this mindset that I'm not gonna let anything separate me from the love of God. Because if you, listen, if you allow things to come in between you and God, more than likely, you're gonna start veering away from God. And that would happen to Solomon in his old age. He started worshiping everybody and Jehovah. Right? His views and the way he saw things got blended. Listen y'all, we are really fighting for our life. I know it don't seem like it, I know it don't feel like it, I know you don't think it's true, but I'm telling you, you are fighting for your salvation every single day. Every single day, you are fighting for your salvation. You are fighting to stay saved. You are fighting to stay connected with Christ. You are fighting to, to, to block out those things in your mind. You are fighting to stand against the prison power of the air. You are fighting your own flesh within just so that you can stay faced with God. You are fighting every day. You're fighting every day. I don't care how many revivals you go to, I don't care how many times you've been dipped in the name of Jesus Christ, I don't care how many times all that happens, you're still going to have to fight. And you're gonna have to understand that while we're here on earth, it is war. The devil has declared war on us and we're gonna declare war back on him. We're gonna stand with the sword of the spirit. We're gonna stand with the shield of faith. Hallelujah, we're going to stand and we're gonna triumph because the enemy has already been defeated. Hallelujah, we're gonna stand on his word. We're gonna stand tall and proud. Hallelujah, and we're not gonna be ashamed of the gospel of Jesus Christ. We're going to let our flesh know on the inside of us that we stand with Jesus Christ. I don't care what your mind try to tell you to say. You tell your mind, you gotta get in line with Jesus Christ. I don't care what the homies on the block say. You tell them, I'm in line with Jesus Christ. I ain't, I ain't, I ain't ducking from this, I ain't walking away from this. I am totally committed to the things of Jesus Christ because I wanna lay a hold of eternal life when it's all said and done. And I know that I can't lay a hold of it if I'm sucking and jiving down here on this earth. You're in a fight of your life. You're in a fight of your life. You're in a fight of your life. Listen what Philippians 13 says. I may pick that back up on Sunday, you're in a fight of your life. You just don't realize it. We're in a fight, it's, it's, it's an attack against the church. That we're just, we were just talking about. I was just telling my wife about it, about, about the Grammys and all this other kind of stuff, where people are performing songs literally said unholy, performing these satanic rituals and church folk just in awe and, and sticking up for these people. You got people wearing blasphemous clothes and people just sticking up and trying to, trying to stand and say, oh, you know, God is this and that. I'm like, when, when, when will you be offended because somebody's, uh, uh, when will you be offended because somebody has blasphemed God? Like, why do, why is it that we're in this time and because somebody we admire and we, and they're doing some satanic, we try to defend them instead of, instead of saying this is wrong? And the reason why is because they're your God or they have a stronghold on you and you don't even realize it. Just like when I talked about the commercial, the Nike commercial that LeBron had and it was somebody preaching, preaching the gospel. And they're taking that and they're using him and instead of talking about God, everything that's talking about God, they're elevating the man. And people is defending that action and said, whether he knows it or not, it's still wrong. But when somebody has a hold on you or when you put somebody at a high esteem, you defend it. And I'm trying to figure out, I got some questions. I'm trying to figure out that when people offend your God that you say that you love, you love, you keep your mouth closed. But if they offend your favorite artist, your favorite singer, your favorite rapper, your favorite politician, you wanna be all in and defend them, but you won't defend God. In my book, the Bible's telling me that you are ashamed because my God, you, you are ashamed. Why is it that it's okay for people to bash your God that you serve and you keep your mouth closed? But if they bash your artist, use all hell, let's break it loose. Something's wrong. Something's wrong. Who, who really has a hold on you? Who, who, who's laid a hold on you? Who really has a hold on you? You really know who has a, who lays a hold on you when they offend the God that you serve and you are quiet as a church mouse? You won't even tell your friends about it. But if they offend RiRi, all of a sudden now, oh, you can't be talking about her. You can't be talking about this artist, you can't be talking about this. Maybe they got a hold on you. They got a hold on you. You are, you are, you are really their following. That's your shepherd. Hallelujah. Yes Pastor, endures is the key to building a successful life in Christ Jesus. Amen Pastor. I'm trying to, I'm trying to tell you. I'm trying to tell you. That's why I said you're in a fight of your life. You're in a fight of your life. Somebody got a stronghold on you. And you don't know, and we as a church, this is what Paul has to address. Cause when we go to chapter four, it's two, it's two sisters who work with Paul that are, that are not on the same page. Paul is even talking about it later in the text, that he's crying, he's teary eyed because there were people that was in the church, that left the church. They, 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 they wanna fulfill their worldly flesh. They wanna fulfill the earth. Brothers and sisters, if, if, if somebody has a hold on you in this world and you are a born again Christian, you need to repent, you need to tell, ask God for forgiveness and you need to ask God to break that stronghold. The only one that should have a hold like that on you should be, should be Christ Jesus. You mean a hole? I'm telling you, somebody bashing, you wanna, you wanna go and defend them publicly? But secretly, you wanna defend God and not defend Him publicly? That don't make any sense. I'm gonna move on, that don't make any sense. Don't make any sense. Don't make any sense. God help me. He says in 3:13, hallelujah, hallelujah, hallelu-, ah, hallelujah, hallelujah, hallelujah. Listen, before I even move forward, you gotta, you gotta talk to yourself. We gotta do some, some serious repenting as a whole. And we gotta let, we gotta stop putting people on these platforms and we gotta stop idolizing these people. And we gotta go back to the basics of putting God first. Let God lay that hold on you to where when you see something that is blasphemous against God, you are offended. You are saying, God, this is not right, this is not true and I'm gonna say something, I'm gonna cry loud and spare not. I wanted to be on the record that I was against this. This don't make any kind of sense. I'm against it. And I wanna let the world know, I'm against it and this is why. Hmm, no. 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 Look at what 13 says. Thank you Lord. He says, brothers, he says, I do not regard myself as having laid hold of it yet. But one thing I do, one, but one thing I do, forgetting what lies behind and reaching forward to what lies ahead. He says, forgetting those things are in the past and pressing towards the mark of the high corner. I, I'm forgetting those things in the past. Listen, this passage is very interesting. Right? He says, I have not attained maturity yet. He says it twice. He says, I don't regard myself, I'm not in, he says, I'm not in a position yet to really have laid hold to where I'm claiming to lay, I'm claiming that we need to do. I, I'm not there yet, I'm, I'm, God is still working on me. I'm not there yet. Right? But he says, I am going to continue to press on. And what's interesting here, what's interesting here is that he says, I am going to forget what lies behind. Oh yeah, oh yeah. I'm gonna forget what lies behind. Listen. Oh, this is some serious stuff here y'all. Because listen, normally, and a lot of times, I've been in church pretty much all my life, and a lot of times, I've heard in the past, right? And I even had the mindset that God was opening me up, right? A lot of times when we talk about forgetting what's, what lies behind, we tend to only say about our previous life before Christ. Now I wanna put this out in context, I wanna put this out. Paul is not saying that you're gonna delete your past. That's not what he's saying because, again, if we read back previously, he listed what he was in his past. So it's not a, it's not a forgetting per se of, I deleted my past. What is, what it's really saying is, he's making it clear that he is not going to live in the past. He's not gonna live in the past. He's not gonna live in the past of what he did before Christ. That's not gonna lay a hold of him, that's not gonna keep him. Because listen, the Greek word here, the Greek meaning of reaching forward really is an athlete who is in position of, who's in, who's in position, right? They're stretching a position to run, they're, they're in a position to compete. So Paul is saying, I'm in a athletic position to reach that goal. I don't have time to live in the past. I don't have time to enjoy, or I don't have time to, to, to let the past be the light of my life. Good or bad. He's saying, I am not going to let the past, good or bad, be a roadblock, a stumbling block, or a stronghold that keeps me from achieving what lies ahead. Because he says, he said earlier, I'm pressing towards the mark. I'm in position to lay hold of eternal life. I can't move forward if I always live at, you remember 10 years ago when God opened up the womb and when a person came out of the wheelchair? And that's all you live at is how powerful you were 10 years ago. But you ain't done nothing yet because you are living 10 years ago. He says, I don't have time for that. If anybody could brag about their street cred for what they did in the things of Christ, Paul has a resume. But he says, I, 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 I can't, I, 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 I can't mess with it. I can't, I'm, I'm, I'm not gonna hold on to that because I'm still in position to move forward. Oh, it messed me up. Oh, this messed me up. Y'all, this messed me up. Come on Pastor. Pastor Deary said, the past is behind, learn from it. The future is ahead, prepare for it. The present is here, living it. I couldn't have said it any better. I couldn't have said it any better. Amen to Pastor Deary, I couldn't, I couldn't have said it any better. That's exactly, that's exactly what he is saying. That's exactly, that's exactly, that's exactly what Paul is indicating. Right? You can't, don't, don't, don't live in the past. Don't live in the past. Like you said, learn from it. Analyze it. The good and the bad, but don't live in it. And we have a bad tendency to live in the past. Especially, 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 we wanna live in the past on the miracle signs and wonders that got us done. Like you, like Pastor Deary said, man, it's good, live in it, celebrate it and then move forward. Because I want you to think about this, I want you to think about it from this perspective. Cause we're running a marathon. If you're running a race, right? You don't go backwards when you run a race. You, you go forward. You can't go backwards. Because if you go backwards, you never obtain the prize. And there are some of us that think we're going forward but going backwards because we live in the past. And if we live in the past, we're gonna read some scripture here, but if we, if we live in the past, we don't put ourselves in a position to obtain the goal until we let go of it and move forward. It's still in our mind. And when we come to a place where we need to bring it back up to help somebody or, you know, all that kind of good stuff, amen, let's do it and then we keep moving forward. You gotta live in it now and you gotta keep progressing forward. You gotta keep looking ahead. You gotta keep looking ahead. Right? So Paul is telling us, he's trying to get us not to stop really running this race. Because if we stop running this race and we're not in position, oh, it's danger. Oh, it is danger. Oh, it is danger. Listen to what he, listen to what Luke says. Jesus said to him, no one after putting his hand to the plow and looking back. Is fit for the kingdom of God. Listen, y'all know about Lot's wife. She looked back. She turned to a pillar of salt. Then the analogy here is this. Listen, if you are always, always looking back. You're not fit for the kingdom of God. You can't be doing two things at the same time. You can't be trying to move forward and, and, and looking back. You gotta keep pressing on. I want to be fit for the kingdom of God. I believe this is what Paul is trying to get us to ascertain. We, you and I need to be fit for the kingdom of God. So we can't, we can't do that. We can't keep looking back. No. It's not, it, it, it's not gonna work. It's not gonna work. It's not gonna work. It's, it, man, it's not gonna work. President Lawrence says to Ravenna, it's not gonna work. You gotta keep looking ahead. And I, I just wanted to say this before we move forward. If you're struggling with your past. This is the perfect time for you to talk to God. And to ask him to help you get relief, resolution from your past. Right? Especially if it's something bad that happened, some traumatic experiences. Man, God can help you. Because it can be those things that happened that were not good to you in the past. That's keeping you from moving forward. That is making you fearful from moving forward. And Jesus can help you right now. He can deliver your soul right now. The Bible says his word is sharper than a two-edged sword. He can detach a bone from marrow, soul from spirit. He can detach those soul, those demonic soul ties that are on you. Even right now. He can, he, he can do that right now. He can do that right now because the Lord wants to see you succeed. He wants you to be with him in glory. Paul wants us to be with God in glory. That's why we gotta keep our eyes on the prize. We're gonna have some good days and some bad days. There is nobody here arguing that we're not. Cause if, if they say that, they, if they say that, they lying. Right? We gonna have some goodness and bad days. So you gotta keep your eyes focused on the goal and not look back. And not be held by people's opinion. Come on now. Not be held about what they said you weren't gonna be. Not even be held about how you used to do what you used to do in church. Cause guess what? God can give you all of that and restore all of that and keep you moving forward. It's not, I'm trying to tell you. It's about your soul being saved and entering this, entering into eternal rest with him. So now what does he do in fourteen? He makes it clear. He says, I'm pressing, there go that word pressing again. We saw it in twelve. So we see it again. I'm pressing towards the goal for the prize of the upward call in Christ Jesus. Paul makes it very clear. That he is in, again, he's pressing, which is to pursue. He's in pursuit. He's in pursuit of the prize of the upward call. He has his eyes obtaining salvation and he is letting the church know. What they need to do to move forward in the things of God. I'm trying to tell you. He's moving forward. Listen, I, we, I just want to go over a little bit about the prize here. Just a couple of scriptures. So one of the things about the prize, right, is something of value given to those completing a race. Which Christians' life is linked to, right? Christians' lives are linked to running this spiritual race. It's, and, and it goes on to say, though believers must accept discipline and training. A prize is reserved for everyone who is committed to Christ Jesus. Listen, let's look at some of these scriptures. There's a prize that is re- reserved for all believers. There's a prize that's reserved for every last one of us, a prize. There, in second Timothy four, seven and eight talks about. The crown is where, the crown is worth giving to the winner of the race. Let's read that passage real quick. He tells, he says, I fought the good fight. I finished the course. I kept the faith. He says in verse eight, second Timothy four and eight, he says, in the future there is laid up for me. The crown of righteousness, which the Lord, the righteous judge will award to me. On the day, and not only to me, but also to all who have loved his appearing. There is a crown, there is a prize. There is a crown of righteousness awaiting you. There's something reserved for you in glory. This is why you gotta persevere. This is why you gotta stay in there. James says in the one and two, he says, blesses a man who perseveres under trial. For once he has been approved, he will receive the crown of life. Which the Lord has promised to those who love him. Listen. Oh. You lucky I didn't go through all the scriptures with crowns, right? We have a crown of righteousness that's laid up for us. Blessed is a man, and James one and twelve says, blesses the man again who perseveres under trial. For once he has been approved, he will receive the crown of life, which the Lord has promised to those who love him. Y'all, y'all ain't hear me here. You are going to be blessed. Blesses the one, amen, who perseveres under trial. Blesses the one. Hallelujah to your name. You and I are gonna be blessed. If we persevere and hang in through trials. He says, we get, because we're gonna be approved and we're gonna receive the crown of life. This is what Paul is talking about. There are crowns, there, there is things laid up for you and I in glory. And we would be a fool to miss out on that. We would be a fool. Amen Pastor Deary. Thank you for tuning in. Hallelujah. Hallelujah. Amen. Listen. There's a prize waiting for us. A crown of glory. There's a prize waiting for us. A crown of glory. For those who are going to endure and hang in with the Lord. Key word, persevere. Didn't I tell y'all earlier? Y'all gotta, we gotta persevere. We gotta hang in there under trial. This life is full of trials and tribulations. It's full of them. It's full of them. Air day. Air day. It's full of trials and tribulations. The question you gotta ask yourself is what, what are you gonna do? Are you going to hang in there or are you gonna walk away? Listen to what Peter says. And when the chief shepherd appears, you will receive a unfading crown of glory. We saw some things. The crown of righteousness, the crown of life, and the crown of unfading glory. Y'all ain't hear me. These, these are some crowns now that you and I are in line to receive. If we stay connected with Christ and persevere. This is why he says, I'm pressing on to the upward call. I'm moving forward. I'm pressing on. I'm in an athletic position to continue to move forward. In the things of God because I do not want my labor, number one, to be in vain. Number two, I do not want to miss out on what God has restored for me. So I am going to hang on in there. Listen, Paul is speaking again from a perspective that he is motivated. He is motivated to stay with him, to stay with God. He is motivated to keep on, keep it on. He is motivated. He's motivated. He is motivated. He is, he is, he is, uh, what you call it? Not only motivated, he, 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 he is ten toes deep into it. The word will come to me. Amen. What I want to say. He's motive, he's motivated, he's dedicated, and he's committed. He is not going to let anything separate him from God. He's devoted. That's the question you gotta ask yourself before we move forward. Are you, are you motivated? Are you dedicated? Are you committed? Right? All of these things you gotta ask yourself. Because listen, no one who is not fully committed to Christ is going to withstand what we gotta withstand. At some point they're gonna bow out. It's just the truth. Because they're gonna say to themselves, why did I gotta put myself through all of this mess? This don't even make any sense. Why I gotta do all of this and, and A, B, C, D, E, F, G is on the other side? Why do I gotta do all of this? Well, that just tells, that just tells me, there's something in you that's not fully sold out on the things of God. There's something in you that's not fully dedicated and motivated with God. There's something in you that's, that's still like, man, I don't know if Christ is real. And I pray that if you're struggling, that you ask God to help you in the areas that you don't believe in yet. Or you have some unbelief in, so that you can be motivated and committed. Nobody's saying being perfect, cause you won't be perfect. But through Christ, he's gonna help you move into perfection. That we're gonna grow into perfection with him. Here's some of the things, here's some of the requirements for winning the prize. Here's the first one. Like I just said, dedication to God. Ah, dedication to God. Paul says, uh, not Paul, well, access. But I do not consider my life of any account as dear to myself. So that I may finish my course and the ministry which I receive from the Lord Jesus. To testify solemnly of the gospel of grace of God. We saw this in Philippians three and, uh, seven. We read this a couple of weeks ago, or last week. Says, but whatever things we've gained, were gained to me, those things I counted as a loss for the sake of Christ. More than that, I count all things to be lost in view of the surpassing value of knowing Christ Jesus, my Lord. For whom I have suffered the loss of all things and count, count them but rubbish so that I may gain Christ. So we gotta be totally committed. Hallelujah. We gotta be totally committed. Verse fourteen says, I mean, uh, it also begins to say perseverance. Philippians four thirteen, we write three fourteen, talking about pressing up to the upward call. This theme is perseverance. Hebrews, I mean, Philippians two and sixteen, it says, holding fast to the word of life. So that in the day of Christ, I will have no reason to glory because I did not run in vain nor toil in vain. Holding fast to the word of life. These are requirements here that you and I need. Requirements here. Hebrews twelve oh one. It says, therefore, since we have so great cloud of witness surrounding us. Let us also lay aside every incomprehence and the sin which easily entangles us. And let us run with endurance the race that is set before us. Let us lay aside all of the sin, all of those things that entangles us. He's, Hebrew rather is challenging us, right? That there are some things within us that we need to let go of. And we can't let go of those things. We can't hold on to those things and still stay with them. We gotta let go of those things that are entailing us. So that we can run this race with endurance, with perseverance that's set before us. Revelation says. Two and ten, do not fear what you are about to suffer. Behold, the devil's about to cast some of you into prisons. So that you will be tested and you will have tribulations for 10 days. Be faithful until death, and I will give you the crown of life. Y'all ain't hear this. Y'all ain't hear me. Listen, I ain't use that today. Hey, I'm just saying. Y'all ain't hear me. I'm just saying here. I'm just saying. He says. Revelations, John, he's writing. Hey y'all. Don't, don't be afraid. We finna suffer. Right? He says, the devil's gonna cast some of y'all into prisons. Right? Some are gonna be tested and we're gonna have tribulations for 10 days. We understand he's talking to, uh, one of the churches here, right? He's talking to one of the churches in Revelations two. But this has a bigger, a bigger, um, uh, meaning to it. Cause not only is he talking to that specific church, but he's talking to the church as a whole, right? Listen, cause we're all gonna suffer. We're, some of us have been in prison. We're, we're, we're gonna be tested. But he says something key, be faithful until death, and he's gonna give us a crown of life. Be faithful until death. And he's gonna give us a crown of life. Listen what he says in Revelations three to eleven. He's talking to another church here. His, I'm coming quickly. Hold fast what you have, so that no one will take your crown. My goodness. My goodness. That a priest right there. Amen. My dad is saying, he says, I like, I like that he has given us a direction. He is saying, I'm pressing forward. He is not turning back. I'm not going forward. I, I, I'm going forward with all of my haters, my mistakes, et cetera. My eyes are fixed. I know, that's what I'm saying. Amen. That's, yeah. That's what I'm saying. That's what I'm saying. This, this right here. This is some tough stuff. This is some tough stuff. Man, this, this, this Revelations three and eleven is just hitting another way tonight, right? You know how sometimes you read a scripture over and over again and sometimes it just hits another way. It's in another way. Cause the last part, the B part. He says, you know, he says, hold fast to what you have. Hold fast to this salvation. Hold fast to this glory that God has given. Hold fast to all of this, so that no one will take your crown. Hold fast to that. Another thing that he's, that he's saying, right? We gotta keep God's rules. This is part of that movement, right? We gotta keep God's rules. Second Timothy two and five says, also, if anyone competes as an athlete. He does not win the prize unless he com- competes according to the rules. It's just not enough to win the race. You gotta win the race according to the rules. We gotta keep the Lord's rules. This is not a race that you win by any means necessary. You gotta stay in the line of rules, the parameters that the Lord has set. This is hitting a different way y'all. This is hitting a different way. You just can't win the prize just to win the prize. You can't just win just to win. You gotta win, ah. You gotta win, hallelujah, according to the rules. The parameters that the Lord has set. Self-discipline. Corinthians says. Everyone who competes in the game, games exercise self-control in all things. They then do it to receive a perishable wrath. But we are imperishable. Twenty-six says, therefore I run in such a way as not without aim. I box in such a way as not beating the air. Twenty-seven says, but he says, but I discipline my body and make it my slave. So that after I have preached to others, I myself will not be disqualified. Brothers and sisters, ladies and gentlemen, we are going to end here. Normally we go a little bit longer. Amen. All the way up to eight thirty. Amen. But there's a lot of information that we have discussed this evening. Amen. And I want to leave it at us, as, as us focusing on the prize. And pressing towards, and let's, let's digest that amen for a few days. Amen. And understand that, and amen. If anybody wants the scripture references, I got them. I got them already, you know, ready to go. Just, you know, text me. Amen. And I'll send them out. Amen. I may put them on the website. But I, 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 I really, I really see a lot of things here in this text, amen. That we can continue to, to, to grow from and look at. And so I, like I said, I don't want to go into verse fifteen, amen, because I And so I, like I said, I don't want to go into verse 15, amen, because that's gonna start another long, uh, conversation. There's some key things, amen, that you and I can take away, um, from this, from this text. And one of the key things is Paul is dedicated. He's motive, he's dedicated, he's motivated, he's committed. He's totally sold out. He's totally sold out. He's totally sold out, sold out, right? And he's telling us, do not let your past keep you, right? He says, I'm pressing forward. I'm moving forward. I'm not looking back. My eyes are fixed. My eyes are fixed on eternal life. And I'm telling you Revelations 3, or, or 2, 2 or 3, 1, I think it was 2 or, chapter 2 or chapter 3, where it says, don't let nobody take your crown. That's the mentality that we've gotta have tonight, today, in this season. Right? Because more and more people are profaning the name of God. More and more people are taking the Lord's name in vain. More and more people are giving up on even staying with God. And we're seeing more and more people pass away just in January. Lord knows what's finna happen the rest of this year, right? And, and, and it's like every time you turn on Facebook, somebody, somebody that you may have known or ran into, right? They did, they going on a glory. The Lord is really trying to show us something. Man, we need to be sold out with God. We need to be, uh, just with him. And we need to fight those things that are worn in our flesh. You gotta keep your eyes on the prize. And I'm gonna, I'm gonna leave you with this, amen. Who really has a hold on you? Who has a hold of your mind, your thoughts, your desires, your emotions? Does God have a hold on you or does something else, is there something else usurping God? Is there something else in front of God that has a hold on you? That even when those people or society offends and blasphemes the name of God, you're not offended? There's a problem there. Did somebody else has a hold on you? It's easy to start, you know, trying to make all of these concessions, all this other kind of stuff for people that has a hold on you. But you ain't defending God. I mean, there, 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 there's something wrong there. You gotta be willing to offend your Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. Paul says, I'm not ashamed of the gospel of Jesus Christ, right? He's really telling you, I'm mighty proud to be, uh, with Jesus Christ. Amen. So let's go ahead and pray. Father, in the name of Jesus, we thank you tonight for your word, your glory, your grace, and your power. God, we just thank you for your word. We thank you, God, that you have opened our eyes and our hearts and our minds to see you clearly. And that, God, we are not gonna let anything or anyone just move in your place, Father God, and be God over us. That, God, that we, I'm praying that we are totally committed and submitted to you. And I'm also praying, Father God, if there are, are those, God, that are in between, that are struggling, that you help them even right now in the precious name of Jesus so that they can get theirself back on track through the power of you. And say that I don't want God to be second. I want him to be first. And I don't want anybody to, to, to make me, to put me in a position that I give up my glory, that I give up the crown that is waiting for me. I don't want to trade that in, God. And God, help those that are on the fence that are, don't even realize it, but they're trading that crown of life in. Father, we just give you glory, honor, and praise. And we just ask you to continue to bless us, bless our houses, bless our families, bless our kids, our extended ones, God, and those that are struggling in the fence. Again, God, pull them back into you. We give you the glory, honor, and praise in Jesus' name, amen. Again, brothers, sisters, thank you for, uh, amen, hallelujah. Uh, uh, we, we, we thank you again for tuning in, hallelujah. And I'm telling you, uh, please join us, amen, Sunday at 10:00 AM, amen. We will be here again, amen, worshiping, uh, the Lord here in this building. So we'll have service at 10, um, 10:00 AM, amen, starting with prayer. So be here, amen. We're gonna have a time in the Lord. So until then, we will see you, amen, on Sunday. Be blessed in Jesus.